Welcome to the October seventh City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones. And today's invocation is led by Mr. Whitten and the pledge. Please stand.
Mr. President. Tonight, we ask for guidance to make smart and thoughtful decisions that will benefit all citizens of Troy, that we make sure every voice is represented as we cast our votes. We ask for the safety of our police and fire first responders. And as we meet tonight, we send our condolences to the friends and family of those killed one year ago today, and ask the end of hatred and closed mindedness that leads to such events.
I would plead to the Father and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes, here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Twist? Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Twist.
Second.
Move to excuse Mr. Twist by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Motion to withdraw the motion to excuse Mr. Twist.
Second.
Motion to include him in attendance.
Motion to include Mr. Twist in attendance.
Better late than never.
Alrighty.
Still crying over that Steelers' loss?
I was, and I was actually on a conference call.
About them.
Yeah. Crying about work.
Alright, Mrs. Knight, could you please read the summary of the minutes of September sixteenth, twenty twenty four?
Minutes of Council, September sixteenth, twenty twenty six. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, accepting final plat of Section seven of the Halifax Estate subdivision, section, uh, Section seven, as I said. Streets and sidewalks committee recommends legislation be prepared authorizing an agreement for the design of the Adam Street Riverside Drive-Stoughton Road Roundabout Project. Resolution number R forty-eight, twenty twenty four. Agreement for the design of the Adam Street Riverside Drive-Stoughton Road Roundabout Project, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R forty-nine, twenty twenty four. Approving the tax levies and certifying those to the county budget commission was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O thirty-four, twenty twenty four. Final plat Halifax Estate, Section seven subdivision, and dedication of right-of-way was given first reading and was adopted, following various comments, Council adjourned at seven twenty-five P.M.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Committee reports, we'll start with the committee as a whole report. Council met as a committee of the whole on September thirtieth regarding the future compensation of elected official positions and recommendations recommends the following, noting that compensation cannot be increased during the current terms of the positions. The undersigned members of com- committee of a whole support legislation being prepared to provide for the following future compensation increases. For the elected positions of mem- member of council and the president of council, increases the compensation by two percent annually for years two thousand twenty-six to two thousand twenty-nine, and therefore based on the annual percent increase established by OPERS to retain OPERS eligibility. For the elected positions of mayor, auditor, director of law, increase the compensation by three percent annually for the years two thousand twenty-eight to two thousand thirty-one, and therefore, therefore based on the annual percent increase established by OPERS to train OPERS eligibility. For elected positions of treasurer, increase the composition by three percent annually for years two thousand twenty-six to two thousand twenty-nine, and therefore based on the annual percent increase established by OPERS to retain OPERS eligibility. Official positions of mayor, president of council, auditor, auditor and director of law shall continue to receive the health and life insurance benefits available to other city employees subject to the same terms. This is respectfully submitted by Christie Marshall, Todd Severt, Susan Westfall, Bobby Phillips, Lynn Snee, Jeffrey Whitten, Je- Jeff Schilling, William Twist, and Samuel Pierce. Any questions or on that? Alright.
I think Mr. Pierce had a, uh, didn't I?
True.
Think he had a minority report.
Recommendation is not supported by the undersigned Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
And you guys will all get a sign. Start that way, please. Alright, other than that, we will go to Community Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, we have a couple of items on the agenda of committee reports from our committee. And, um, the first one, uh, is a summary report on the Final Record Plan Somerset Reserve Plan Development Phase One and Dedication of Right-of-Way. Uh, this committee met on September thirtieth to review a recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the Final Record Plan of Phase One of Somerset Reserve Plan Development Residential PDR be approved as it conforms to the approved general plan and final development plan. This PD is located at the southwest corner of Nashville Road and West Market Street. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that this legislation be prepared to approve the Final Record Plan of Phase One of the Somerset Reserve Plan Development Residential PDR and the dedication of right-of-way. And this would be respectfully submitted by Mr. Samuel Pierce, Mrs. Lynn Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Any questions or comments on that? Continue.
Thank you. This is requiring recreational trails in all subdivisions. This committee met to consider a request of the committee chair that the ordinances and regulations be amended to require recreational trails to be required in all new subdivisions. It was determined that Mr. Schilling's comments will be provided to the consultant reviewing the comprehensive plan and the subdivision regulations, and that the consultant will be asked to provide responses as soon as possible. Uh, no recommendation is being made at this time, and this is respectfully submitted by, again, Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you.
Is that it? Yep.
Finally, Mr. Severt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure of presenting the amended resolution to increase the authorization for water meters. The committee met September thirtieth to consider an amendment to resolution number R seventy-seven, twenty twenty-two, so the city can purchase additional water meters and a supply of radio transmitters to assure a supply of both items to efficiently process meter replacements and replace radio transmitters related to water and sewer billing. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared amending resolution number R seventy-seven, twenty twenty-two, to increase the authorization for water meters and appurtenances for twenty twenty-four from two hundred and ninety-seven thousand to four hundred and forty-eight thousand, with such legislation to be an emergency measure so that the additional purchases can be purchased without delay. That's respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Comments, questions? We'll move on to Recreation and Parks. Mrs. Westfall?
Alright, this one is regarding bidding and farm lease agreement, uh, for part of Paul G. Duke Park. Committee met on September thirtieth to consider bidding a farm lease agreement for a portion of Paul G. Duke Park. Um, the Board of Park Commissioners has recommended that the city again bid a farm lease agreement for approximately thirty-seven point five acres of the Paul G. Duke Park. Two areas of park have been under a farm lease agreement that expires at year-end. A new lease agreement would be based on a three-year agreement with up to two one-year mutually agreeable extensions. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a farm lease agreement for a portion of the Paul G. Duke Park. Uh, respectfully submitted by Christie Marshall, Jeffrey Whitten, and myself as chair, Susan Westfall.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Moving on, Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. On September thirtieth, this committee met regarding increasing the authorization for the professional services agreement with Prime Construction Management Survey of Cincinnati, Ohio, for construction administration services for all construction related to the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project for an additional amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The initial authorization was eight hundred and fifty thousand. With the estimated date of the completion of Phase Two, and with the weather allowing construction to take place during the winter months, the last couple of years, the period for construction management services will be approximately eight months longer than the basis of the initial authorization. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared increasing the authorization provided by the document number R sixteen, twenty twenty-two, to one point one million dollars, and the authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a new amendment to the professional services agreement with Prime Construction Management Survey of Cincinnati, Ohio, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' comments.
No, we have the oral reports on the liquor license.
Oh, all the clerks, okay. We have a bunch of liquor license guys. Liquor permit notices. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the following notices of liquor permit applications. Patents Place LLC, nine dash eleven East Main Street, this is a transfer of D one, D two, D three permits that had been in safekeeping under the ownership of the railroad restaurant. Family Dollar Stores of Ohio LLC, nine twenty-four North Market Street, for a new C two permit. Waltz Works LLC, Arthur Road, for the Trex D one, D two, that was approved by council. Bottle number one twenty-one LLC, sixteen hundred West Main Street, for a new D one permit. Troy Historical Preservation Alliance, one sixteen to one eighteen West Main Street, first floor and patio, D one, D two, D three permits that have been in safekeeping owned by one sixteen West Main Street LLC. The different, uh, permit definitions are attached. The police department has no, has not recommended any, an objection or hearing request to be filed. It would be appreciated if these notices could be provided to council. Uh, do you want, who, let's read the, okay. Huh? Questions? This is all the same thing, eh? That's the same as this, that's the same as that, Waltz Works. Those are all, those are it, right?
Yes.
Yes. They're just the same copies. Alright, now, moving on to citizen comments. Want anything that we have on the agenda tonight? Please come to the podium, leave your name and address. You have two minutes to say whatever you would like to say at this point, and if Mr. Kerber will be kind enough to be our timekeeper. Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R sixty, twenty twenty-four?
Fifty, Resolution Number R fifty, twenty twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids for a farm lease agreement for the undeveloped land located at the Paul G. Duke Park. The current farm lease agreement will expire at this end, this is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Move to suspend readings, Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R fifty-one, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution Number R fifty-one, twenty twenty-four. Resolution amending Resolution Number R seventy-seven, twenty twenty-two, increasing the authorization for the supply of water meters and appurtenances for calendar year twenty twenty-four and declaring an emergency. This will, um, increase the contract by seventy-seven thousand for radio transmitters and seventy-four thousand for some additional meters. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Please read, call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution fifty-two, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution Number R fifty-two, twenty twenty-four. Resolution amending Resolution Number R sixteen, twenty twenty-two, increasing the authorization for the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement for professional services with Prime Construction Management and Survey, Inc. of Cincinnati, Ohio, for construction administration services for the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project. This will increase the, uh, total construction management to one million, one hundred thousand dollars due to length of time that the service will be provided. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend the rolls.
Second.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R fifty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution Number R fifty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with FOP, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., Troy Police Officers Association. This is regarding the terms of conditions and employment benefits for years two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Um, I will abstain to avoid any conflict due to the fact that my son would be affected by this agreement.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Ch- Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Again, I will abstain for the previous reason.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R fifty-four, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with FOP, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., Troy Police Sergeants Association. This is regarding the wages and benefits, terms of, uh, and conditions of employment for years two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Pierce. Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
I will abstain from this one as well due to the fact that my husband is covered under this agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Again, I will abstain for the reason previously said.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R fifty-five, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution Number R fifty-five, twenty twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Ohio Council Eight, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFVL-CIO, and Local sixteen, I'm sorry, thirteen forty-two. This covers the terms and conditions, uh, for the employment of the AFVI employees for years two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R fifty-six, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution Number R fifty-six, twenty twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Ohio Council Eight, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFVL-CIO, and Local thirteen forty-two P. This covers the terms and conditions of employees, uh, AFVI under the Park Department, Park Board, for the years two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O thirty-five, twenty twenty-four?
Just a moment, please. Ordinance Number O thirty-five, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance accepting the Final Record Plan of the Somerset Reserve Plan Development Residential Phase One and Dedication of Right-of-Way. This is the first reading, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission as it conforms as it conforms to the general plan and final development plan. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mrs. Snee, please ca- call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O thirty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Ordinance number O thirty-six, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance amending ordinance number O fifty-three, twenty twenty-three, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the City of Troy, Ohio for the year twenty twenty-four. This is reappropriating the Cemetery Endowment Fund and Hobart Arena Fund as recommended by the City Auditor. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Severt, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Affirmative.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Keep everybody awake.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number O thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance amending ordinance number O sixty-six, twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number O thirty-five, twenty twenty-two. Fixing salaries and wages of police officer, police sergeant, police recruit of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This amends the salary for January one, twenty twenty-four, retroactive to January one. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Twist, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
I get to abstain from this as well to avoid conflict of interest as my son and husband are covered under this ordinance.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
I will abstain for the reason previously stated.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance zero th- or O thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four.
Ordinance number O thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance amending ordinance number O thirteen, twenty twenty-two, as amended by ordinance number O nine, twenty twenty-three. Fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is a ordinance that covers the employees of the APSME agreements, retroactive for the salary of Janu- uh, uh, twenty twenty-four. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number O thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This will establish the salaries of police officer, sergeant, and the position of police recruit for the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Twist, motion to suspend, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
And again, I will abstain from this vote due to avoid a conflict of interest that my husband and my son are covered under this ordinance.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Widdon, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
I will abstain for the reason previously stated.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O forty, twenty twenty-four.
Ordinance number O forty, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This ordinance covers the salaries for APSME employees, uh, including the APSME Park employees for years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Twist, move to suspend, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O forty-one, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number O forty-one, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This ordinance establishes the salaries for non-bargaining and FSLA exempt employees for the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to s- move to suspend by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Se- or Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?[1240.95]